Okay, so I'd like to, I guess, reiterate in the public session of the November 21st school board meeting. Just very quickly, lots of exciting things going on. We had a celebration of the library reopening last night and the sports awards for the fall sports on Monday or Tuesday. Seventh grade is off wearing three-quarter hats or whatever they do in Williamsburg. It's all very good. So, welcome to the board meeting, and we'll get right to it. So, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Does anybody have any comments or questions on those? Can I get a motion to approve those?
It's removed. Second.
Call in the favor? All right. Thank you. Dr. Masaru.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Thank you, and thank you to our invited guests who are with us tonight. Before we get into Mr. Meyer and company and their presentation, just a few things to remind the public of our bond vote that we have coming up on December 10th. We will have a reminder newsletter going out the week after Thanksgiving, once again explaining some of what's, some of the rationale for us asking for the additional $3 million and how that's going to work and what it's going to pay for, and reminding people to come out to vote polls for that day and evening. So, that's that. John, you mentioned the sports awards, and it was a successful fall athletic season. Want to congratulate Karen Peterson and our student athletes and coaches. I think it was a well-done, and not only wins and losses, but I think the overall experience of our kids was very positive this year. And it's nothing nicer than coming home with a state championship as well for our field hockey team. So, that was kind of the icing on the cake of all of that. We did have our library reopening last night. Once again, we want to thank the supporters, the PTA, for their efforts in helping us get an updated facility for the benefit of our children. I think it came out quite nice, and I know the staff and students are already enjoying it. So, there's some finishing touches that'll continue over the next few weeks and over the month or so, but overall, I think it'll be quite nice when it's all said and done. So, we appreciate that. Dan may be giving an update later on in some of the capital project progress, where we are with the current projects. I'll let him do that later, but things are indeed progressing. And that's pretty much it. I want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, and to get a chance to rest, recuperate, eat lots of turkey, those fun things. So, we appreciate that. With that, I'm going to introduce Bill Meyer, who's here to talk about some of the service learning issues. So, Bill?
Thank you. So, I invited a few students to speak as well on behalf of some of their experiences a little bit later on in the presentation. But first of all, I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to talk about this program and the work that we've been doing over the last year and a half. And I also want to thank the students who agreed to be here so willingly, without a community force otherwise, but in all seriousness, I really appreciate the presence and their voice. So, what I thought this would be a great opportunity is just sort of give a little background of where we've been, where we are, and where we're hoping to go as a school and as a district relating to service learning. Bronxville's always had a rich tradition of experiences. We've sent students to Nicaragua. We've sent them to Tanzania and JBC. We have midnight runs, Habitat for Humanity, and across the board, there's always a willingness and an interest in engaging the community. But I think what we wanted to do is begin to shift that engagement so it wasn't just on the periphery of the work and the experience of students, but also connected to the curriculum and at the center of what the school does and how the students understand their education and their learning here at Bronxville. So, as we looked at this work and we thought about this work, one of the things that I think's worth pointing out is how we wanted to move beyond these dated notions of community service to one of service learning. And I put up just a brief outline, but I want to flush this out a little bit. There's a lot of experience students have, but many of those experiences are just one-off experiences, whether it might be a drive, or it might be a visit, even when students have an opportunity over a break or over the summer to visit another country or work in a nonprofit organization, rarely do they have an opportunity to process, to make sense of that work within the classroom. So, service learning is really placing this work at the center of learning within a course, within a discipline, or within a field of research. And I think there's five things to think about when it comes to how we wanted to reframe and re-understand the work and the courses that we're offering in the high school but across the district. One, we want to connect those experiences directly to the curriculum. Again, not something that happens outside of school, but something that happens within school, things that are discussed, reflected on, made sense of. Number two, we wanted to take the experiences students were having and place them in a broader context around the systemic issues that they're often coming up against and facing, and they can speak to both what is they understand, but often what's not understood and requires research and conversation and discovery. Three, we wanted to build an experience that had continuity and consistency. To have meaningful service learning, this isn't just about a weekend or an evening. It's about returning to a placement in a community over and over and over, really so you can build what's at the core of that, and that's relationships. Number four, and I mentioned this already, is moving beyond this idea of a deficit model, and that's very easy for our students unfortunately to do and inherit, and often they're not even aware of the way they move into other communities and the privileges that they bring into those communities. And as they go forward, whether it's outside of this community or into college and beyond, it's awareness of self and also how they move through the world that's so important for them to actually have really a positive impact and benefit in a positive way as well. And the last piece, I think, around the service learning that we were striving to do is develop the whole student, like begin to look at the whole self, the passions, the interests, the curiosity, and use these experiences to drive that and awaken those aspects within students. Where often in most traditional academic settings, it's very singular, it's often very compartmentalized, and it's often very much divorced from what happens outside of the walls of the classroom. So, we were hoping to bring those pieces down. We're really lucky at Bronxville, and this goes back to an earlier point, but we have a history of not just a rich tradition of service, but also a rich tradition of partnerships. And I think this emphasis on partnerships is at the core of where we're going, but also our success. Over the years, we've really benefited a great deal from our relationship with Sarah Lawrence, and our partnership with Sarah Lawrence has not only afforded our students the ability to showcase their work at symposiums at Sarah Lawrence, but to participate in joint classes, evening sessions, talks, but also within many of the placements that Sarah Lawrence has developed throughout young peers. We've branched out from that to also build placements in Mount Vernon, Eastchester, Southern Westchester, the Bronx, and New York City. And it's these placements and this idea of partnership that's also at the center of service learning, which is a shift, but also one that we have in place that I think has helped us make this transition very fluidly and with great smoothness as we go forward. So, what I want to talk a little bit about now, and then maybe the students will be able to add to this, are three courses in particular in the high school that highlight this work. And I start with the Humanities Research elective because this is the oldest of the courses that place service at the center of the work, and this is now in its seventh year, started in 2012. And many of those partnerships that we have came out of this original course. We've had over 200 students take the class, which is pretty remarkable. I actually have a former alumni of the course coming in to speak to the class on Monday, who's now at TFA. And I'm also married to former students of the class next October, so anything's possible to break service and selflessness into the mix. That is true. So, the course itself is built on this idea of partnership, but the class has two components, a year-long course. The first part of the course is about research, exploration, exploring systemic issues around inequity within our society. The second half of the class is where students are introduced to service, and this is where they find service placements. They're in their placements for over eight to 10 weeks where they begin to explore issues of recognizing assets, need, developing a project that meets an authentic need, and then also evaluating that work and that project. And then the course ends with a TED Talk where students actually give a talk to the class and anyone they choose to invite about their own lives and their own experience and journey, because I think a big part of meaningful service is this idea of reflection, understanding self, understanding one's own passions, one's own gifts, so they can be of service to the world and the community in which they engage. Cool thing about that class is also we've had the chance to have joint sessions with sociology course at Sarah Lawrence, and that partnership has really enriched the experiences of our own students in so many ways. The second course I'm going to talk about is a little bit out of order in the chronology, and I'm a history teacher, so this pains me greatly to do this, but I think in the narrative it makes more sense, and that's the Student Global Leadership Seminar, which is, you could consider a Humanities 2.0. I hate to say that because it'll probably stick. But this is a course offered to seniors, and actually everyone in this, the four students who are here are also in this class. Several of them have been in Humanities as well. And this is a really radical redesign of the way we think about our courses, but also one that we feel is progressive and forward-looking. The course itself meets once a cycle, and because of that, it affords students the opportunities to engage in much longer, more extensive service work over the course of the year. And students are going to be placed, are being placed, in three different placements, and the idea is that each cohort of students, we have three cohorts right now within the seminar, will have a common experience, and in that experience, working around issues connected to those placements, whether those issues relate to immigration, whether those issues relate to poverty, aging, class, race, equity, a whole host of pieces. When we started off, the impetus for the class actually is because I'll mention SGLI, the Student Global Leadership Institute. Last year, we had the opportunity to send two students, two of them are here, to SGLI, and we had, I think, over a dozen students who applied. We saw this real interest in the work, so we wanted to offer them a class that could deepen and continue to enrich that interest. We actually have 24 students in the class, so that interest extended beyond that initial core group that was just interested in the SGLI program, which ticked students at Hawaii who were not interested in that. But the interest was sincere, and there was an interest amongst other students in having sort of a college-style seminar to explore these issues that was built around service, the lens of service. And in this seminar, students explore reflective practices, explore ethnographic studies, meditations, podcasts. Also, they are responsible for leading the discussions and facilitating the discussions within the class. It's really, really powerful. The third piece, which actually preceded the seminar, but is in many ways sort of the capstone experience, and the three people in that photo are actually in this room. They might not be recognizable in the Hawaiian sun, but they descended into the winters of New York. But the Global Leadership Institute, which is a partnership with Punahoe, an independent school in Honolulu, that we have actually been developing over the last two years. We were fortunate to send two students to SGLI and an administrator this past summer and actually this coming year. We now have gained an extra placement, three, which might not seem like much, but it's a pretty significant deal because we are one of the few public schools that participates in this program. All the schools come from across the globe that the students can speak to, and it's a very rigorous two-week experience where students explore a theme. And this past year was more courage, and then develop a project which they bring back to their community around that theme. I think the key piece about the SGLI experience and sort of the reorientation, which I'll also speak to at the end, is how we can not only highlight the work of students that they're doing within the community and outside of the community, but also have a culminating experience, have something to work towards, something in many ways, just like as we highlight the athletic successes of our students, sort of reorienting the service experiences so those do are highlighted. I want to give some of the students here today an opportunity to speak to their experiences within these classes, but I also included a host of quotes, and these quotes were done from a survey that was sent out to 120 alumni of the Humanities course who have taken the class over the last seven years, who are either in college or beyond. This survey was exploring questions around students' research projects, their TED Talks, their reflection, their service experience, but also sort of what resonated about the work of Humanities beyond the course. And I think what's very powerful, and you can read those, is how many of these ideas, this is such a formative period in adolescent's life or in anyone's life, that became the direction in which a student takes or what they're presented with can have a huge impact, a long-term impact on choices that they make later on. I've invited up four students, as I said before, who've had different experiences, some with Humanities, some with Humanities and the seminar, some with just the seminar, and some with all three, or SGLI as well. So, fortunately, they're all seniors, Ella Stupart, Michael Bernstein, Sabrina Melinkoff, and Chloe Slater. And I'm just going to ask them, just for a minute or two, if each of them could share some of their own thoughts and experiences from the course and how those compare and reflect to the experiences they've had before. So, if you guys want to...
Sure. Hi, I'm Ella Stupart, and I'm in Humanities and the Global Leadership Seminar this year. And I think one of the, in the Global Leadership Seminar, one of the best pieces of advice that Mr. Meyer gave us was to, if you want to do meaningful service, do something and don't put it on your college application, because then you know that you're doing it for the right purpose, and you're not doing it to get ahead or look good for colleges. You're doing it to serve people, and I think that's extremely important to keep in mind when doing service. I went on the Nicaragua trip my summer going into my sophomore year, and it was an amazing experience for everyone who went. But one thing that I would change about it is when we got home, we didn't really continue to help the community in Nicaragua. We, yeah, we didn't do any other work, it just ended there. And I think it's really important to, when you do service, it should be like, you should be more focused on helping the community, and that means being consistent with helping the community, not just going for a week and then pretty much never helping again. And I think that Humanities has really given me the opportunity and a lot of students the opportunity to help in a larger way. So, everyone picks a topic, and we pretty much research it for the entire year, and you get put in a service placement to help with your, like, something to do with your topic. And I've never done a project on the same topic that I picked for the entire year. Usually when we do like a passion project or pick your own project, it's like you study or you study the subject for two weeks, do a presentation, and that's pretty much it. But I definitely think through Humanities, a lot of students can leave an impact on the school and larger community, so.
I last year took the Humanities Research Course. This year, I'm in the Global Leadership Seminar, and over the summer, I participated with Sabrina in the Student Global Leadership Institute. So, being in all three, I don't really know where to start, but Humanities ended up, I took it not really knowing what I was getting myself into, but it ended up being my favorite course, like something I looked forward to every single day, which I cannot necessarily say about all my other classes. But I had the opportunity to pick a topic that I ended up being extremely passionate about and continuing my research and my work with to this day. I did my research papers, long, 18 pages, about the sexual inequity within schools and how that starts with the curriculum from a young age, and then how that leads to sexual inequity and rape culture in the college system. So, I originally started with that research, and then I had the opportunity, second semester, to work with One Love in Bronxville about healthy and unhealthy relationships and sort of have like a more on-hand experience with that research and, you know, teach younger students about having healthy and unhealthy relationships and what that looks like. So, that was a really rewarding experience to sort of see that research come to life. Throughout the year, I got to meet with professionals and experts on like Title IX, as well as sexual health experts. So, it ended up being something I could have never imagined. And then having gone to the Student Global Leadership Institute, it sort of took the class to the next level because I was in this class sort of learning about all these experiences of other people from other communities and around the world, and then here I was with kids from all around the world who were going through sort of the same things I was, except completely different. And I got this, I got the actual global experience of it that I think is so unique and incredible. And I know that only some people do have that opportunity, but it all started with this Humanities course and the introduction, and with even the Global Leadership Seminar. They were both so instrumental to my service learning passions and just sort of get, like, dipping my feet in the water into that. So, I just, I can't really express like how thankful I am that I took this course because now I spend most of my time outside of school, you know, seeing how I can contribute with what I've taken from this to our community and also hopefully learning more about what's going on in others and having that genuine interest and want to help. So, yeah, that's my experience.
Hi, I'm Michael, and I am in the seminar course. So, for as long as I can remember, service has been like a big thing in my life for various reasons, but Humanities has never gotten a chance to fit in my schedule. So, I was really happy when last year, Mr. Meyer told our history class that the seminar is going to be offered as an option. And given that it only is offered, it's like 40 minutes, once a cycle, and I think every day at the end of our discussion, we unanimously agree that we wish we had more time to discuss these issues, because these issues, they may not be present in this school district, but in towns five minutes from here or communities all around the world, there are these big issues, and we're going to see them in college. And so, just getting the chance to talk about them for 40 minutes is impactful, but what we also talk about a lot is these connections, connecting to people. So, in my freshman year, I went to Nicaragua, and the one thing I took away from that trip was it was a lot of service, but we didn't spend a lot of time with the people. So, then the summer between my sophomore and junior years, and then again last summer, I went to JBSC at Main Springs in Tanzania. And anyone who knows that trip knows how impactful those kids have on your life. The stories they tell you, everything that you learn from them is super meaningful, and it really does stick with you, as cliche as that sounds. And then coming back from there, the one thing again that was kind of missing was like doing something here at the school in our community that helps them. We spent 36 hours traveling there for two weeks. We make these connections, but then we come back, and it just kind of feels like it's, there's nothing left to do. And so, this seminar is really focused on like connecting and getting out to other communities and making an impact on other people's lives. And I think the one thing that we haven't really touched on a lot is it's not so much about helping ourselves, which, you know, people say like, I went to Tanzania and it really helped me, but it's also like, I helped them, they helped me. Like, it's a lot of what they do for us. And so, since freshman year, I've also been part of the Office and Wordness Club, which Mr. Meyer runs. And for the past three years, me and one other kid, we've been running it, and one thing we've really focused on is getting into the classrooms and working with the students, and it's all really just about the connections that we make with other people, because as much as we think we're helping them, they're really helping us a lot more, and that seminar has really brought that to life.
Hi, I'm Sabrina, and I'm in the Student Global Leadership Seminar, and I was looking up to go to Hawaii this summer. Starting with the seminar, it honestly has shifted the way that I look at service in my life. My only complaint would probably be that I wish I had something like this sooner. So, since freshman year, I participated in a club called Tassel, where we teach English to Cambodian students. So, we do this through Skype or through kind of almost like a pen pal relationship where we have a student who's writing back and forth with one Cambodian student. So, leading this club, I think that the biggest obstacle I encounter is the lack of, I would say, understanding and ability of our students to place themselves. So, we have 50-plus kids who are writing back and forth, and I periphery what they're writing, and I see the notes that they write to the students, and they're really, really heartfelt, super sweet, but they say things like, they're talking about their own lives, like, oh, yeah, I'm going to travel here, going out to dinner with my family, doing all of these wonderful things. And I know that they're just trying to open up about themselves. I just hope that it doesn't get lost in translation. So, having had this seminar-style class and seeing how effective it was for me and opening my mind, I'm going to try to bring something similar to Tassel. So, the seminar inspired me to try to create one about Cambodia for my own club, because having seen how that worked on me, I can only hope that I can do the same for the students in my club. Speaking about the Student Global Leadership Institute, I totally, it totally resonated with me, what the others were saying, and Mr. Meyer, about relationships being so key to not only service, but also growing yourself. That's definitely my biggest takeaway from the institute is the 75 friendships that I formed there, and just kind of seeing all of these other kids, as Chloe said, so similar but so different, but kind of united in the fact that we're all dedicated to doing service and bettering our own communities, whether that be in New Zealand or India. So, seeing the passion of the kids and how they're bringing, they're enacting real change in their own communities has really only made me more passionate about the initiatives that we're bringing back here, which is the social and sexual community building here.
I think what all four students voiced really well is this idea that there is such a big part of this work is around understanding oneself and identity, and that shouldn't be understated. And through that exploration of self, identity, and what one brings into the world, they can do that in a more effective and positive way that really places, as was said, relationships at the center of all this. The last piece I wanted to touch on, and I think some of these ideas were touched on, but the students as well, is sort of where do we go from here? We have these courses, these new courses that we're offering, but there's so much more work that we feel can be done, not just in the high school, but across the district. One of the first pieces is expanding this work to the ninth and 10th grade, and as Sabrina had said, you know, there's no reason that the first experience students have with this is in 11th or 12th grade. And I think one of the hopes is that we can break Humanities down to ninth and 10th grade, and then a culminating experience in 11th and 12th grade is the seminar. And the seminar is more available to more students, can be led by teachers across the district who can work from their strengths and their passions to explore these issues of service and identity. The third piece is this idea of deepening our involvement in Student Global Leadership Institute, and that's a partnership that we're really excited to continue to grow. We've been so fortunate to be a part of that, sending another teacher and another group of students. I think will further expand that relationship, but also the impact of that work that Sabrina and Chloe have had already on the community with some of the speakers and the speaker that's coming at the end of December, and some of the work that they're setting up for the new year. The fourth piece here is to deepen existing opportunities across the community, throughout the community, those relationships. We were fortunate enough to be a part of the Mellon Grant that was awarded to Sarah Lawrence, and as part of that grant, it's looking to really build those partnerships and relationships in a more formalized way that goes beyond personalities and individuals, but becomes systemic. We also want to bring this work, and there's such great work going on in the elementary school, but bring some of this work to like be the change in the fifth-grade portfolio, adding this reflective component to the work that students are doing in these adding this reflective component to the work that students are doing in these younger grades because there is the capacity and the interest in working with teachers to help students make sense of what they're doing, but also of themselves in that work. The next piece is bringing more continuity and understanding to the broader context of the service experience middle school students are having. There's no reason that there can't be greater exploration within the curriculum and within these clubs and organizations around these service experiences that middle school students are having. They might be shorter, but they can just, they can be just as rich. And the last piece, which I think is so important, is the connection to the promise and this idea of strengthening these opportunities for compassion, for self-reflection, for empathy, for engagement. And I think that's at the heart of all the work we're seeking as educators, as parents, as adults, and even as students, both in high school and beyond. So we've been so fortunate to have the board's support in this work and have the district's support, the administration and the foundation's support, and I really think this is just the beginning. So next year, if you invite me back, we'll have eight students, take up the whole meeting. Just kidding. So thank you so much. I don't know if there's any questions, but work on the students or myself.
Any questions?
That was great.
That was great.
I have just one logistical question, and I think it's fantastic. How do you, what, how much time subs until do students get during the day to do, or is it on weekends when they do it? Because if they afford the classes or whatever their schedule is, how do they get to New York City?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think working, we try to create placements where students can access them across their own schedules. So in most of the placements, it's during Monday through Friday, but some of the placements have after-school opportunities. That's probably the biggest challenge within this work, and it's not the willingness, it's the time with the students. So because the class only meets for once a cycle, we, part of the expectation is from that other time that they would have been in class, they use one to two hours to be at the placement and their service placement. But that's, that's a reality and a challenge within our district for sure. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the comment.
Yeah. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
Not an easy yet to follow, but I'll do my best. That was extraordinary.
You may not get the same applause.
Yeah. Quite okay. I have a number of resolutions for the board to consider this evening. First is a tenure candidate for teacher assistant in the Bronxville School. Yamilah Salazar has been a teacher assistant with us for the last several years, having originally been hired as a teacher aide. And when we had an opening, we only have four teacher assistants in the district in each of our special classes, and she was clearly the strongest candidate and we hired her. She is an integral part of our special class with our youngest, five, six, seven-year-olds. She works very closely with the teacher to ensure that there are individualized programs for each of the students that meet their needs academically as well as socially and behaviorally. And she helps assist in the training and managing of the teacher aides in the classroom to ensure that everyone is meeting the students' needs. Yami really helps create a nurturing and warm environment in the special class, and it's with great pride that I ask you to consider her tenure.
Can I get a motion to approve the tenure recommendation? Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Congratulations.
And then on the other end of one's career, we have before us a resignation for the purpose of retirement of Ms. Barbara Dine, who has been a high school guidance counselor here in Bronxville for twenty-one years. And she has been a part of the many changes that have happened over these two decades. And her caseload over the years has really appreciated her involvement and her support. And we have a plan in place. Her caseload will be in good hands, and we are beginning a search, and we will certainly keep the families of her caseload informed of how that search is going and what our plans are. So that will be effective January thirty-first. And also before you this evening is a probationary appointment of one of our teachers in the middle school as well as two FMLA leaves for the purpose of childcare. In addition, you have before you a teacher aide resignation, some teacher aide appointments, a new substitute teacher as well as a substitute teacher aide. And then on the second page, this meeting, we need you to accept the resolution appointing the election personnel for our special district meeting of qualified voters on December tenth, our bond vote. In addition, we have a new modified ice hockey assistant coach and a winter roster for you to consider, as well as our part-time appointment of a school nurse at St. Joseph's School. So that would be B through N, please.
Great. Can I get a motion to approve items B through N as described?
Second.
Any comments? Questions? I would just like to comment to, a special thank you to Ms. Barbara Dine for all of her service. I don't think she's here. And if you could pass that on to her, maybe she would talk to her. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
As far as a financial report for the month of October, we don't have one yet. We have transition going on between treasurers. We'll have October's and November at the December meeting, hopefully. At least October, we'll be done by then. The transition is going smoothly. We've had a, Kathy Lynch is still coming in to consult with Terry Eker, our new treasurer, and, you know, things are going well. So we're happy. I think we got lucky and found somebody who can step into Kathy's shoes. Moving on to budget development for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, we had a rather large piece of news come in in the last couple of weeks regarding the teacher retirement system contribution that is required of us each year. They lowered their anticipated rate of return from seven and a quarter to seven point one percent, which means if they're going to get less investment income, they got to go somewhere for that money, and that's going to be to going to school districts. They gave us a range of nine and a quarter percent to ten and a quarter percent, which is up from eight point eight six percent that we're paying now, which means that all else remaining equal, we're looking at an increase of anywhere between a hundred to three hundred thousand for that piece of the budget. And I'm currently putting, you know, the budget together now, rolling over teacher salaries, employee salaries, and, but we have a little flexibility. A few large expenses from last year are going to be coming out. Retirement incentive on the PA system, we're both in there. And then on the revenue side, you know, we'll see what we get for sales tax, but it's certainly going to be higher than was budgeted. And also state aid. Yeah, I think we're, we were conservative this year, so we can catch up a little bit there. So we have a couple of revenue pieces we can increase. So, you know, we're probably looking at a, the discussion's been a inflation rate somewhere around one and a quarter, somewhere like that. So our, we anticipate our cap will be around there somewhere.
It's just about five hundred thousand?
Yeah, six hundred maybe.
So we talked about this, I guess, in the spring when the state changed the, or created the ability to create a reserve, TRS.
Sure.
This is exactly what we wanted to.
Exactly.
I think there's a couple of areas on the, any reserve categories that we can look at. But I think that should be on the agenda for the finance committee for this year.
How much do you anticipate the increment from the increased sales tax and the state aid to make up for the amount that? It would probably offset the increase in teacher retirement, I think in combination, the two of them. But, you know.
At the hundred thousand estimate or the three hundred thousand estimate?
Uh, the lower side, unfortunately. And what we do, we budget, we budget the ten and a quarter percent, and it usually comes in lower than that. You know, they, so we'll be able to trim towards the end of the process, hopefully.
The problem is a one-point swing is like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And there have been years where there's been like a five.
Yeah.
Swing, which would entirely consume the, you know.
They've needed, they have been told to do this for a long time. There were a lot of people who recommended. The reserve, yeah. No, no, not the reserve, the rate of return. Yeah, the estimated rate. Go the estimate. And the recommendation of a lot of people was that they should do it in a year in which the rate was going down. Exactly. And then it would just go down less instead of making it go back up. But they missed it. And, you know, John and I and Michael Finley have talked about, you know, getting the finance committee to target in, really a practice for this, an anticipated practice as far as budget and use of that reserve are more aggressive than we have in the past for the employee retirement system reserve to smooth out any budget changes year to So that's it for budget development. I anticipate having a draft, a first draft of the budget available for the board before the break, as usual, so everybody can enjoy their break by going through the budget line by line. That's, that's the winter break, not the Thanksgiving break. I don't think I have any, there's some action items, but they're not financial action items. Facilities update, library is just about done. We're just awaiting small punch list items like LED lights. Today, we put the nickel-plated or aluminum letters, whatever they are, over the library that says the Bronxville School Library. Looks really, really nice. I mean, the difference between the corridor where the library is now and a year ago is night and day, literally. It brings a lot more natural light into that corridor. And then the library itself, I think, I think the architects and the contractor did a really good job of increasing the function of the library while keeping the traditional look. You know, turning it into one of those modern classrooms that we, multi-use classrooms that we have would, would be nice, but it would be hard to do that with the stained glass windows. So I think we have the multifunction use with a more traditional look, especially in the main room, and then a lot more flexibility in the side rooms and, and so we're looking forward to that being completed with the HVAC on the overall project to get that air-conditioned. But we're using it and the teachers love it, the kids love it. And let's see, what else are we doing? We're working on installing steel on the third floor classroom addition over on the Meadow Avenue side there. The pointing and concrete and brick fixing is ongoing. Right now, they're focusing on the parapet over the main entrance. Asbestos abatement is done in the stairwell on that corner where the new addition is going to go, and they're getting ready for more demolition in that area. The atrium entrance has been closed. We're currently working on exit and entrance plans over by the auditorium and then down near the athletics area, the accessible ramp down there, which is part of a policy that we're going to revise later on in the meeting. That's about it. Obviously, the stormwater system that's been upgraded has worked fabulously, which I mentioned at the last meeting, but I'll probably say every meeting that we don't have a flat. So, and then, you know, Dr. Manassano mentioned that we've been, you know, we've been talking about the bond vote for the additional funding, which will keep, which will keep us under the, our commitment for a flat, tax-neutral debt service. And in meetings we've been in with PTA councils and other constituents, we've gotten a lot of nods and not a lot of shaking of heads. So I would just encourage everybody to come out and vote, please. And that's it. We do have a fire safety policy, revised exiting procedures due to the closing of the atrium entrance, and that's basically just shifting traffic out through the auditorium exits and further down Meadow Avenue.
Do we do adopt this?
Yes.
Does this include disseminating and what will this be?
Yes.
It has been.
So can I get a motion to approve the revised fire safety plan?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
We actually had an unanticipated fire drill and so had to test this plan even before you approved it and got everybody out.
Are we going to have to adopt as, as work keeps getting done?
If we change the address, the address is changed.
All right. So we have to adopt a policy each time?
Yep.
Okay.
The exit procedure.
Other action items, we have a school trip, annual lacrosse spring break, uh, spring break trip proposal. I have two more trip proposals, but they'll probably be on the December agenda. We don't have all the information in yet. This, this lacrosse spring break has been an annual thing, at least for the last few years. Further ones you may see are a music trip and, who's the other one?
DR.
Yes, Dominican Republic trip. Nicaragua trip is going through DR. So we'll see those in December, hopefully, but for now, please, lacrosse trip.
Great. We do approve that one as well, right?
Yes.
So can I get a motion to approve the lacrosse spring break trip?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I think we move to, unless there's any committee reports, public, more time for public comment. Anybody from the audience want to say anything or? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn? We should wish everybody a Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
So, I'll be the next one.
Great, thank you.